Buenas noches. Como presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford, he llamado orden en esta reunión especial de la Junta del 6 de abril de 2019. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, perdón, es una reunión especial. Todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o dados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decorum y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencien sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar. Le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Si alguna persona necesita traducción al español, el doctor Vázquez Matos le va a ayudar con el servicio. El doctor Vázquez Matos está allí de pie. Gracias.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una escultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que los requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago solará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Buenas noches, superintendente y miembros de la junta de educación. En el último año escolar, la Federación de Maestros de Hartford ha estado hablando con la superintendente de las escuelas respecto a las dificultades dentro de muchas escuelas de Hartford, sobre el clima y la cultura dentro de esas escuelas. Lo más preocupante es la disciplina estudiantil. En demasiados casos dentro de las escuelas, los estudiantes no están siendo responsables de comportamientos totalmente inaceptables. En demasiadas escuelas, la lengua respetuosa, las acciones y la falta de responsabilidad y el comportamiento aceptable son comunes. Como un maestro me dijo, entre 20 y 40 estudiantes están fuera de clase durante el tiempo instruccional en su escuela en particular. Cuando el maestro pregunta por qué los estudiantes no están en clase, esto es lo que reciben por respuesta: "Vete a la mierda". Esto es una lengua común utilizada hacia adultos constantemente. Los estudiantes en esta escuela están literalmente caminando por las calles y creando no solo un ambiente inseguro, sino, por supuesto, no recibiendo instrucciones. ¿Hay consecuencias para estos estudiantes? No. Los estudiantes no reciben consecuencias cuando este tipo de comportamiento acertado ocurre. Parece que cualquier cosa va en algunas de nuestras escuelas. También parece que las políticas que este junta de educación aprobó, como por ejemplo, las uniformes escolares, no existen en una de las escuelas secundarias. Cuando un maestro en la escuela pública de Hartford preguntó a un estudiante por qué no estaban uniformes, esto fue hecho frente al principal, el maestro fue reprimido y se le pidió a ese estudiante esa pregunta. Los maestros han sido heridos por estudiantes que han golpeado, golpearon, arrancado y lanzado objetos a los educadores. No hay ni una disciplina dada a estos estudiantes. Por supuesto, todos ustedes se dan cuenta que cuando no se dan consecuencias por el maltrato, ese maltrato se vuelve todo bien en los ojos de la persona o personas cometiendo el ofensiva. Por supuesto, no es aceptable, pero sin consecuencias para el mal comportamiento, el mal comportamiento se convierte en norma. Miembros del junta de educación, ¿son estos ejemplos como una práctica que aceptaría la junta de educación de Hartford? Esta noche escucharán una variedad de miembros de la Federación de Maestros de Hartford que les darán más información sobre el comportamiento inaceptable dentro de nuestras escuelas. Por favor, recuerden que somos maestros cuyos trabajos implican educar a nuestros estudiantes, pero junto con el aprendizaje de libros, absolutamente deben tener habilidades, habilidades de vida. Habilidades de vida, aprendizaje, lo que significa respeto uno por otro, lo que incluye la lengua respetuosa utilizada y consecuencias para aquellos que eligen romper las reglas. Le pregunté a los miembros del junta de educación, por favor, por favor, caminen por algunas de nuestras escuelas. Seríamos felices de decirles cuáles son. En algún momento de las próximas semanas, sin anunciar, estas palabras provienen del Estatuto estatal de Connecticut, la ley. Dice: "La educación es mantener a los niños seguros y enseñar a los estudiantes". Cuando lo que acabo de describir está ocurriendo en las escuelas, la seguridad no está sucediendo. Eso es número uno antes de la educación, seguridad luego de la educación. Por favor, escuchen esto. Gracias.
Heather Zatola. Buenas noches, superintendente Torres Rodríguez y miembros del junta de educación. Mi nombre es Heather Zatola y he sido una educadora de Hartford durante casi 27 años. También soy una patrona orgullosa de dos niños que ambos han participado en las escuelas de Hartford durante los últimos 11 años y uno todavía es estudiante aquí en la HMTC. A pesar de estar en Hartford durante 27 años, nunca he hablado en una reunión de educación. Siento la necesidad de hablar hoy para representar a los muchos maestros frustrados y distraídos con los que trabajo diariamente. No estoy aquí para hablar mal de mis administradores, ya que sé que han sido tan apoyados como pueden ser. Suponiendo que muchos de ustedes no tienen experiencia en el aula, pensé que les daría un vistazo a la vida del maestro. Todos fuimos a esta profesión por varias razones, pero una cosa es segura, todos amamos a los niños y queremos enseñar. Desafortunadamente, algunos días eso es lo último que sentimos que hemos podido hacer. En cualquier día, un maestro puede decirle a un estudiante que está en el asiento de aprendizaje que lo que acaba de decir a otro estudiante no era bueno y ese estudiante puede voltear a su maestro y llamarla basura. Puede levantarse y romper su libro de lectura, simplemente porque le hablaste de comportamiento inapropiado. Un estudiante pre-kes puede no gustar que le digan no y puede golpear, golpear, golpear o espalda a su maestro, dejando marcas, y esos son los pre-kes. En el aftermath del informe de la OCIA, los maestros se han convertido en objetivos y han caído en la víctima de falsas acusaciones de estudiante. Un estudiante incluso llegó tan lejos como caer de su silla en clase y proclamó que el maestro lo empujó. Otro estudiante respaldó su historia escribiendo, a pesar de que el estudiante había caído, confesando a la administración que había hecho todo eso. Estamos asustados. Los estudiantes también son libres de romper nuestras salas en una furia y tenemos que sentarnos y ver todo suceder. Se nos dice que evacuamos nuestro aula, pero miren a ese estudiante furioso. Oh, sí, y mantengan el ritmo con los guías de la educación del distrito y la Eureka de matemáticas. Estamos cansados. Algunos maestros también se enfrentan a padres irrazonables que piensan que es aceptable poison penarlos por correo electrónico, o peor, entran en nuestro edificio y atacan físicamente y verbalmente. No nos sentimos seguros. Cuando mi colega, que solo ha enseñado cinco años y que también era maestro estudiante y un exemplar de uno en eso, llora casi diariamente debido a los comportamientos en nuestro aula y nuestro equipo tiene una discusión casi diaria sobre qué otras vías de carrera podemos tomar utilizando nuestros currantes actuales, usted sabe que las cosas están mal. Cuando un veterano de 27 años no puede recordar jamás haberse frustrado con su trabajo, usted sabe que las cosas están mal. En mi opinión, los estudiantes han cambiado durante los 27 años. Algunos se han vuelto menos educables, menos dispuestos a escuchar, menos motivados a trabajar, mucho menos respetuosos de la autoridad y tienen períodos de atención cortos. No tienen miedo de las consecuencias porque francamente no hay ninguna. Y así estamos aquí tratando de forzar los estándares comunes hacia los gargantes de los desinteresados. Y no me equivoque, todos los días llegamos a trabajar, a veces con retentado, e intentamos hacer nuestro trabajo, pero estamos pidiendo ayuda, estamos pidiendo más recursos para nuestros estudiantes que pueden ser traumáticos y necesitan algo más que un maestro de aula pueda darles, especialmente cuando tienen una clase de 20 y más estudiantes con las que tratar también. Y si no recibimos más apoyo para estos estudiantes, no estoy segura de cuánto tiempo podemos durar. Gracias por su tiempo. William Morrison. William Morrison. Beth Bascher.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Beth Bascher y he sido maestra en Hartford durante 35 años. He enseñado todo desde el primer grado hasta la escuela secundaria. Estoy aquí esta noche para luchar con ustedes para hacer que la salud social y emocional de nuestros estudiantes sea prioridad. Podría hacer las mismas historias que el expresidente acaba de decir, con maestros que son llamados nombres, nombres vulgar, que se les dice "vete a la mierda" todos los días, son pronunciados, otros estudiantes son burlados y intimidados, los estudiantes salen de clase, los estudiantes cuando se les dice que van a ser escritos, básicamente dicen: "No me cedo", lo que sea, porque nada va a pasar de todos modos. Son muy empoderados y no sienten ningún tipo de consecuencia. Así que una de las cosas de las que hablábamos era tal vez tener algunas soluciones. Cuando era maestra de secundaria en Naylor, teníamos un trabajador social, un consejero de orientación, un psicólogo de la escuela, un maestro de salud y un viceprincipalo para los maestros del 7º y 8º grados. Estos miembros de la unidad eran capaces de apoyar a los maestros del aula y abordar las necesidades emocionales y comportamentales de nuestros estudiantes. También teníamos un programa de mediación activa que involucraba a un grupo de estudiantes entrenados para mediar conflictos entre estudiantes con el apoyo del junta de educación. Naylor una vez tenía un programa de internación de matrimonio y familia a través de la Universidad Central de Connecticut que también proporcionó apoyo adicional a nuestros estudiantes. Teníamos programas de mentorización con los estudiantes de la UCSD que vinieron a pasar tiempo con nuestros estudiantes, nuestros estudiantes más socialmente desafiados para darles la atención que necesitaban. No tenemos casi ningún apoyo de este tipo. No tenemos más de este tipo de apoyo. Tenemos dos trabajadores sociales y un psicólogo parcial para 565 estudiantes. Tenemos un técnico de comportamiento que es frecuentemente ocupado con uno o dos estudiantes a través de todos los niveles de grado, pre-kes hasta 8, y también tiene funciones como la de cafetería. Puede preguntarse por qué no tenemos estos programas más. Es mucho debido a la falta de personal y la demanda de tiempo para que los maestros y administradores implementen constantemente nuevos programas académicos, asisten a reuniones, preparar pruebas y mucho más. proporcionar y desarrollar programas de apoyo tarda tiempo que no tenemos, especialmente cuando no parece ser una prioridad de nuestro sistema escolar. Necesita liderazgo y la filosofía de que es justo tan importante ayudar a nuestros estudiantes a aprender a ser buenos ciudadanos, igual que es necesario desarrollar sus habilidades académicas. Mantenemos una alta barra de expectativas para lo que nuestros estudiantes deberían poder lograr. ¿Por qué no mantenemos la misma alta barra para cómo nuestros estudiantes deberían conductarse comportamentalmente en un entorno escolar? Hacemos injusticia a nuestros estudiantes cuando no creemos que pueden hacerlo mejor. El junta y la administración necesitan apoyar a todas las escuelas, estudiantes y personal en la dirección de la dirección para que se aprovechen de la necesidad de apoyo para que se necesiten. Hacemos una buena gestión de todas las escuelas para que todos entiendan que tenemos una obligación moral para apoyar el decorum necesario para realmente mejorar el aprendizaje. Gracias.
Kim Webster.
Hola, soy la chemista de Classical Magnet y fui chemista y con ambos trabajos fui en el ejército, así que tengo mucha experiencia en la vida. En Hartford hemos oído que practicamos justicia restorative en PBIS. No niego que saber por qué un estudiante actúa o cómo ayudar a ese estudiante a tomar mejores decisiones es importante. Sin embargo, no creo que como distrito estamos cumpliendo con las necesidades de estos estudiantes, los que actúan. Si el distrito quiere implementar justicia restorative en PBIS, entonces necesitan entrenar a esos estudiantes dentro de las escuelas para hacer esto. Nunca he sido entrenado en ninguno de ellos. Me encantaría ser entrenado adecuadamente para que puedan ayudar a esos estudiantes a ser la mejor versión de sí mismos. Hay más a la justicia restorative en PBIS que a los incentivos. Hay consecuencias significativas para las acciones de los estudiantes. Sin las consecuencias significativas para sus acciones, ¿qué les ayudará a tomar una mejor elección? Si todo eso sucede es una conversación una y otra vez, entonces, ¿cuándo cambian su comportamiento? ¿Qué demuestra esto a nuestros estudiantes? Que actuar es okay? Disfrutar el aprendizaje y el aprendizaje de nuestros estudiantes importan más que el aprendizaje y el aprendizaje si sus acciones no responden. Estoy aquí hoy para dar voz a esos estudiantes que están sintiendo la frustración por la falta de disciplina coherente dentro de nuestras escuelas. Estos estudiantes son los que sufren más cuando sus compañeros de aula actúan y roban, sí, roban su educación. Perdieron tiempo valioso dentro del aula que ya está limitado. Estos estudiantes también son subestimados y se sienten así. Todo el atención se le da a esos estudiantes que actúan, no solo una vez en un rato, sino regularmente. Hay estudiantes que buscan a sus maestros para hacer más en el aula, entender conceptos a un nivel más profundo. Sí, se preocupan por sus grados, pero quieren aprender y trabajan duro todos los días. Veo la frustración en sus caras y en su discurso. Como yo, no entienden cómo un grupo de estudiantes puede mantener su educación hostia. Hay estudiantes que vienen a pedir ayuda cada mañana y cada sesión de intervención, no porque necesiten la ayuda, sino que prefieren la ayuda o solo quieren un lugar seguro donde trabajar. También hay estudiantes dentro de la HPSS que se van a la calle y se quedan en la calle por cierto, tal vez debido a esta misma razón, tener su educación manteniendo en hostia a aquellos pocos que actúan. Hay momentos en los que un estudiante recibe una consecuencia significativa y su padre llama a la escuela o al oficio central para negociar la consecuencia. Esto ayuda a reforzar que este comportamiento es aceptable. ¿Cómo puede alguien no estar dentro de la escuela donde ocurrió el incidente, no tener la información necesaria, tomar una decisión informada? Las manos están vinculadas desde arriba hacia abajo con respecto a la disciplina. No ayuda a ninguno de los estudiantes. Aquellos que actúan ahora saben que pueden negociar o reducir sus consecuencias y aquellos estudiantes que aprenden, además de estos estudiantes, ven que actuar es okay, lo que ellos también hacen. Le exhorto a ustedes a mantener a estos estudiantes trabajadores en mente. Son las verdaderas víctimas de la falta de disciplina coherente dentro de nuestra escuela. Perdieron tiempo valioso que nunca volverán. No estamos haciendo lo mejor para crear un entorno que les sienta seguros y valorados. Esta es la primera vez que muchas personas, tanto personal como estudiantes, no se sienten seguros en nuestras escuelas en este distrito. Gracias.
Antes de que el próximo presidente venga, me gustaría hacer un breve comentario. Appreciamos sus comentarios y queremos escucharlos. Sé que estas son cosas importantes para ustedes, pero tenemos muchos presidentes esta noche. No quiero interrumpir a nadie, pero me gustaría que la gente pudiera acelerarse y tratar de mantener un buen tiempo. Gracias.
Eileen Flattery. Buenas noches. Gracias, señor presidente, por ese comentario antes de mi discurso. Lo aprecio. Soy Eileen Flaherty. He sido maestra en Hartford durante 15 años y todos esos han sido en la Junior Magnet de Hartford, Academia Trinity. Me gustaría centrar nuestra atención en nuestro modelo distrital de excelencia, que ustedes todos conocen, declara lo siguiente: "Creemos en nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces, expectativas altas, inclusividad, colaboración, continua mejora y responsabilidad sistémica". Esos son creencias honorables, compartidas con esperanza por todos los presentes, pero creer no es suficiente. Es hora de actuar colaborativamente con esas creencias compartidas. Es hora de establecer expectativas altas para nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces y las expectativas altas incluyen comportamiento apropiado. Es hora de comprometerse con la continua mejora de nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces y la mejora incluye comportamiento apropiado. Es hora de exigir responsabilidad para nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces. Responsabilidad incluye comportamiento apropiado. Proclamamos que nuestra misión es, citando, "inspirar y preparar a todos los estudiantes para encontrar éxito en y más allá de la escuela". Para lograr ese éxito, nuestros estudiantes deben desarrollarse tanto académicamente como comportamentalmente. Como señaló el doctor King, inteligencia más que carácter, ese es el objetivo de la verdadera educación. Debemos abordar los serios problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a la educación, inteligencia más que carácter. Gracias.
Tiffany Moyer-Washington.
Hola, soy Beth Bascher y he sido maestra en Hartford durante 35 años. He enseñado todo desde el primer grado hasta la escuela secundaria. Estoy aquí esta noche para luchar con ustedes para hacer que la salud social y emocional de nuestros estudiantes sean prioridad. Podría hacer las mismas historias que el expresidente acaba de decir, con maestros que son llamados nombres, nombres vulgar, que se les dice "vete a la mierda" todos los días, son pronunciados, otros estudiantes son burlados y intimidados, los estudiantes salen de clase, los estudiantes cuando se les dice que van a ser escritos, básicamente dicen: "No me cedo", lo que sea, porque nada va a pasar de todos modos. Son muy empoderados y no sienten ningún tipo de consecuencia. Así que una de las cosas de las que hablábamos fue tal vez tener algunas soluciones. Cuando fui maestra de secundaria en Naylor, teníamos un trabajador social, un consejero de orientación, un psicólogo de la escuela, un maestro de salud y un viceprincipalo para los maestros del 7º y 8º grados. Estos miembros de la unidad eran capaces de apoyar a los maestros del aula y abordar las necesidades emocionales y comportamentales de nuestros estudiantes. También teníamos un programa de mediación activa que involucraba a un grupo de estudiantes entrenados para mediar conflictos entre estudiantes con el apoyo del junta de educación. Naylor una vez tenía un programa de internación de familia a través de la Universidad Central de Connecticut que también proporcionó apoyo adicional a nuestros estudiantes. Teníamos mentores con los que participábamos con la comunidad de la escuela. Teníamos un programa de internación de familia a través de la Universidad Central de Connecticut que también proporcionó apoyo adicional a nuestros estudiantes. No tenemos casi ningún apoyo de este tipo. Tenemos dos trabajadores sociales y un psicólogo parcial para 565 estudiantes. Tenemos un técnico de comportamiento que es frecuentemente ocupado con uno o dos estudiantes a través de todos los niveles de grado, pre-kes hasta 8, y también tiene funciones como la de cafetería. Puede preguntarse por qué no tenemos estos programas más. Es mucho debido a la falta de personal y la demanda de tiempo para que los maestros y administradores implementen constantemente nuevos programas académicos, asistan a reuniones, preparar pruebas y mucho más. proporcionar y desarrollar programas de apoyo tarda tiempo que no tenemos, especialmente cuando no parece ser una prioridad de nuestro sistema escolar. Necesita liderazgo y la filosofía de que es justo tan importante ayudar a nuestros estudiantes a aprender a ser buenos ciudadanos, igual que es necesario desarrollar sus habilidades académicas. Mantenemos una alta barra de expectativas para lo que nuestros estudiantes deberían poder lograr. ¿Por qué no mantenemos la misma alta barra para el aprendizaje y el aprendizaje si sus acciones no responden? Estoy aquí hoy para dar voz a esos estudiantes que están sintiendo la frustración por la falta de disciplina coherente dentro de nuestras escuelas. Estos estudiantes son los que sufren más cuando sus compañeros de aula actúan y roban, sí, roban su educación. Perdieron tiempo valioso dentro del aula que ya está limitado. Estos estudiantes también son subestimados y se sienten así. Todo el atención se le da a esos estudiantes que actúan, no solo una vez en un rato, sino regularmente. Hay estudiantes que buscan a sus maestros para hacer más en el aula, entender conceptos a un nivel más profundo. Sí, se preocupan por sus grados, pero quieren aprender y trabajan duro todos los días. Veo la frustración en sus caras y en su discurso. Como yo, no entienden cómo un grupo de estudiantes puede mantener su educación hostia. Hay estudiantes que vienen a pedir ayuda cada mañana y cada sesión de intervención, no porque necesiten la ayuda, sino que prefieren la ayuda o solo quieren un lugar seguro donde trabajar. También hay estudiantes dentro de la HPSS que se van a la calle y se quedan en la calle por cierto, tal vez debido a esta misma razón, tener su educación manteniendo en hostia a aquellos pocos que actúan. Hay momentos en los que un estudiante recibe una consecuencia significativa y su padre llama a la escuela o al oficio central para negociar la consecuencia. Esto ayuda a reforzar que este comportamiento es aceptable. ¿Cómo puede alguien no estar dentro de la escuela donde ocurrió el incidente, no tener la información necesaria, tomar una decisión informada? Las manos están vinculadas desde arriba hacia abajo con respecto a la disciplina. No ayuda a ninguno de los estudiantes. Aquellos que actúan ahora saben que pueden negociar o reducir sus consecuencias y aquellos estudiantes que aprenden, además de estos estudiantes, ven que actuar es okay, lo que ellos también hacen. Le exhorto a ustedes a mantener a estos estudiantes trabajadores en mente. Son las verdaderas víctimas de la falta de disciplina coherente dentro de nuestra escuela. Perdieron tiempo valioso que nunca volverán. No estamos haciendo lo mejor para crear un entorno que les sienta seguros y valorados. Esta es la primera vez que muchas personas, tanto personal como estudiantes, no se sienten seguros en nuestras escuelas en este distrito. Gracias.
Antes de que el próximo presidente venga, me gustaría hacer un breve comentario. Appreciamos sus comentarios y queremos escucharlos. Sé que estas son cosas importantes para ustedes, pero tenemos muchos presidentes esta noche. No quiero interrumpir a nadie, pero me gustaría que la gente pudiera acelerarse y tratar de mantener un buen tiempo. Gracias.
Eileen Flattery.
Buenas noches. Gracias, señor presidente, por ese comentario antes de mi discurso. Lo aprecio. Soy Eileen Flaherty. He sido maestra en Hartford durante 15 años y todos esos han sido en la Junior Magnet de Hartford, Academia Trinity. Me gustaría centrar nuestra atención en nuestro modelo distrital de excelencia, que ustedes todos conocen, declara lo siguiente: "Creemos en nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces, expectativas altas, inclusividad, colaboración, continua mejora y responsabilidad sistémica". Esos son creencias honorables, compartidas con esperanza por todos los presentes, pero creer no es suficiente. Es hora de actuar colaborativamente con esas creencias compartidas. Es hora de establecer expectativas altas para nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces y las expectativas incluyen comportamiento apropiado. Es hora de comprometerse con la continua mejora de nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces y la mejora incluye comportamiento apropiado. Es hora de exigir responsabilidad para nuestros estudiantes hermosos y capaces. Responsabilidad incluye comportamiento apropiado. Proclamamos que nuestra misión es, citando, "inspirar y preparar a todos los estudiantes para encontrar éxito en y más allá de la escuela". Para lograr ese éxito, nuestros estudiantes deben desarrollarse tanto académicamente como comportamentalmente. Como señaló el doctor King, inteligencia más que carácter, ese es el objetivo de la verdadera educación. Debemos abordar los serios problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas. Debemos darle lugar a nuestros estudiantes a los problemas comportamentales en nuestras escuelas.
I'll be honest with you, it really was. We had to leave 11 years ago when Mr. Adamowski started the Magnet schools. I'm a healthcare worker for many years as well, so I was instrumental in getting the Nursing Academy started, something that we wanted our kids to do. We're kind of surprised at what's happened in this Hartford school system. Discipline at my school, Hartford Public High School, has become almost non-existent. I'd like to say "non-existent" because I really don't see much about it, but it has become a really almost non-existent situation. Our children roam the halls. Now, this is a tough thing to say because good kids, when they see bad kids doing this kind of stuff and nothing happens to them, will emulate that. I hate to say it, you know, if they can get away with something, they would probably do that, and our kids who roam the halls will do it, and they'll be shouting profoundly down the halls, and our administrative team seems to have very little effect on them. As a matter of fact, my classroom is located next to the main office. I rarely see the administrative team come out of their office. There are 160 different members who work at Hartford Public High School, yet they want the 93 teachers to be the only ones to manage the kids who are in the halls as well as the ones who are in their classroom. It doesn't make sense. It's a terrible situation. The kids are wonderful. I love teaching chemistry to the kids. The kids do a great job when they're there. But all this discipline stuff coupled with what we now call block scheduling, which is a real mess, okay? Boy, we end up with kids who just don't seem to get it. The teachers are upset. The discipline issues don't seem to get handled. I file referral forms on kids who cut classes or do something. I haven't received...I may have gotten one or two responses all year long back from the administrative team. They don't follow the process. You know, earlier this school year, we did away with the discipline forms, if you guys remember, and it used to be a quadruple form where one page was given to the discipline committee. It was a good checks and balances thing. It was not to get anybody, it was just a good checks and balances, and also for somebody else to keep an eye on what the discipline was like in our schools. You know, we at Weaver High School, we had our issues also, but we dealt with them. I don't see these issues being dealt with at Hartford Public High School. And the real sad part about it is that our attendance rate has just become awful. I think 67% of our kids are absent almost on a daily basis from one class or another. I don't know the exact statistic, but it's extremely high. I just can't get over that so many kids would be allowed not to go to school, to not be in class, to walk the halls, and to just be chronic problems over and over again. Everything that everybody else said about restorative justice is absolutely true. Everything that they've said about these situations of having been sworn at, spit at, hit at, whatever you want to call it, is absolutely true. At the high school level, it's really tough because now they're bigger than we are. And we had a security guard get stomped in this past October. Much of that situation is still potential. We all feel it under the surface of the skin at Hartford Public High School. Now, I don't want to complain about Hartford Public High School because it's not going to exist too much longer. We just got news today that we're being reconstituted, which means that 100% of those teachers who work there will have to reapply for their job, but that none of the administrative team will have to concern themselves with that. We see the problem as a top-down problem.
Sir, your time is up.
Oh, I thought that was my two-minute time. Well, thank you for your time.
I'm Ron Linker. How are you? Doce dice at the city. It's written in stone on the front of the second oldest school in the United States of America. Doce dice at the city, written in stone. That used to mean something. They say you can't rock the pub. Have you visited the pub lately? It's been rocked. Numerous students regularly and loudly wander the hallways. The same students who's caused extreme disruptions throughout the building do so on a daily basis and with impunity. Some have been doing it for years. With these roving packs of students wandering the halls, occasionally being herded around by security or breaking into a room to attack another child, what we hear from administration is that they wouldn't be in the hallways if our lessons weren't boring. There's supposed to be a uniform policy. I suppose there is one on paper somewhere. Staff gets more trouble from administration for trying to enforce it than students get for breaking it. When we bring data that suggests block scheduling is detrimental to our students, that it's devastating to a population with chronic absentee issues, the response by administration is that teachers can't teach the block. When every special education teacher I've ever spoken with says that we need more pull-out programs that some students don't benefit from and some students do damage to the mainstream classroom, we hear from administration that teachers don't know how to differentiate properly. We've been told that, according to the data, there are less students wandering the hallways this year than there were last year. My eyes and those of my colleagues who are actually in the building last year suggest otherwise. Is there a reason that not one administrator who would have seen the same thing is still administrating at the pub? What are you trying to hide? There have been administrators in this district who have failed their way up to as high as Assistant Superintendent under the blind eyes of those at central office. Because of their silence, teachers now get reprimanded and reported to DCF for merely doing their jobs. We're all mandated reporters. DCF me and I'll DCF you. We can't differentiate away the myriad of bad policies that get thrown at us each school year, and they are bad. We're supposed to have the same goals. My goal is to educate children. Yours seems to be to have data that makes it look like you're educating children. These are not mutually exclusive. If your policies were good, the relationship you have with your teachers wouldn't feel so adversarial. I'm a teacher. What are you? Doce dice at the city.
Hi, San Yenny.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent, I know you're under a lot of pressure right now, to be honest. I'm going to be honest with you. We are in crisis in this system. And you know, all the good things that's been done is being blocked out by the negative things, so the good things are not being talked about. You know, the other day we had this great robotic team at Hoffer High, but all those are clouded by the negativity that's happening in our building. You know, we talked about everything, but no one talked about our parents. Our parents are taken out of the equators of teaching. I felt that when my kids were going to school, there was a partnership between myself and my teachers. That's all not there anymore. So now we are just teaching kids with no form of parent involvement because it's not there, okay? I don't care who said it, maybe training parents. There's no training, okay? So I want to let you know that. My beloved Classical Magnet is at the bottom of the barrel, and it saddens me. I saved that program years ago, and it's going down the hellhole, all right? We have wonderful children. We have wonderful staff, but there's no discipline, and administration hands are tied from really doing discipline. So Superintendent, I'm asking you, you need to know what's going on in this building, and the only way you can know if you are in those buildings, go in those buildings on a daily basis to see what's happening. Otherwise, you will hear these teachers, "How do you have kids going to school six months, eight months without a science teacher, and you expect to graduate them?" "Without an English teacher, and we expect to graduate those kids." Classical was one of the highest schools in the city of Hartford, and now nobody wants to go there. No kids want to go there. It saddens me. I'm hoping that you can save the building. You can save the kids. You can save everything in this district. I'm telling you, it's a lot of work to do, but we need help. We are in a crisis, and there's no doubt about it. There's no pushing it under the barrel because it is there. It is there, and we need to do something about it, all right? So we need to get a parent involved, and I'm sure how we're going to do that, because I think parents is kind of taking themselves out of being involved with what goes on in their children's life, okay? So we need to make sure that we are getting them back, getting them back into the building to feel like they are a part of our building. Save our school. Help us. Build a relationship with the teachers. The teachers are the ones that's on the front line at all times. Please help. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. I apologize in advance. I didn't plan anything, and I'm trying my best to keep myself together right now. I'm going to start with just an anecdote. My seventh graders have only three classes, and so about four hours of their day is random periods intervention advisory. So my team took it upon ourselves to plan elective classes, and the students got to choose. Twenty-seven of a 71-class group of students chose to be in student council. So we started a seventh-grade student council, and the first day we just established norms, and then I said, "What do you want from our school? What do you want out of your school? What do you want out of the place that you come for seven hours and 15 minutes a day?" And the three things that they chose to focus on first for the next two months of school were they want a health class. They want a health class. They want to be kinder to each other. These are from their mouths, not teachers. They want their school to be a place where people are kind to each other, and they want to be able to paint and plant things and make their school beautiful. So if we want to talk about holding children accountable, we first need to talk about our accountability. And that starts with the district, and we all know that the budgetary constraints we work under don't allow us to have the staff that we need, excuse me, the programs our kids deserve, and those are not in our locus of control. Those are not right now in my locus of control. But the things that are in our locus of control as teachers, as staff members in the building, are doing our very best job. And quite frankly, I know I'm going to be crucified for this tomorrow, but I'm going to speak the truth. We're not, we are not, I'm sorry, in a 10-person middle school. We have two teachers currently not even in the building. So our kids are already down 20% of that staff, and quite frankly, when you ask kids why they're not in class, it's because teaching isn't happening and teachers aren't being held accountable. And I can say that as a teacher. That is my life every day. So when we talk about teachers who work hard, I put in often 14 hours a day because I love my kids, truly love my children, but that's just as angering to me as it should be to our kids and our families and our city and our board because I work hard and a lot of people don't. And why is that? Why is that? Superintendent, I'm sorry, I'm starting an 092 program this summer, and I'm sure I'll never be actually an admin in this district because I talk too much, but what are we doing from the top down to hold those staff members accountable? And I'd like to say one last thing to the comments that have been made. There is no such thing as a bad student.
I'm going to pronounce the last name incorrectly. I do apologize. Sasha Bentham. Kelly Santana.
That's up guts. I like that. Good evening, board members, Superintendent. Like to see you in that middle chair. Good job. Congratulations. My name is Kelly Santana. I'm a Parkville parent, a parent leader, NRZ member of the Parkville community. I'm on the Board of Directors of the NRZ. I have a vote. And my question is basically to the teachers of why the vote of no confidence against our new principal at Parkville. I'm wondering if your vote of no confidence is based on the fact that she's a Latino and she's in a Latino community, and she comes from that school. She's a product of that school. Because for six years, there was no pushback, year after year, when there was evidence, real evidence, of no leadership ability in that school. I wonder if the pushback you're giving her is based on the past because in the 16, 17 school year, only 24 kids could read at school level at Parkville. At the 17, 18 school year, only 17 kids could read at grade level at Parkville. So I'm wondering is the pushback against her, is it because she's going to push you to do your job better? I would like to also point out that her work so far this year has surpassed the work left behind the old principal. Maybe the reason you vote no confidence on her is because she can see past all the BS reason you as teachers give for not doing your job well. Or maybe your vote of no confidence against her is because she supports the superintendent's plan to excellence. Let's not forget the biggest pushback came from the teachers against that idea. I get we need teachers, but what we don't need are any teachers that are in our district that are not here to better a Hartford student. We do not need a teacher pushback on change that can better our students. And right now, more than ever, we need to stop making it about the teachers and keep the focus on the children. So we as parents, we as parents at Parkville, we support the new principal. And I leave you with a vote of no confidence against the teachers of Parkville for not wanting to better my neighborhood school, for not giving their very best when it comes to teaching the kids at Parkville. And I'll leave you with this. We as parents need to really take a look at the teachers coming from outside of Hartford that don't look like the students they're teaching that need to be escorted to the parking lot at night because they're scared of the neighborhood that they're in. Are they here to teach our children? Are they here to help keep us, people of color, suppressed? Food for thought. Thank you. And I'll leave you with 10 seconds.
Jessie Pierce.
My name is Jessie Pierce. I sit here this afternoon and I listen to all the tippers rant and rage, and it kind of frustrates me, the fact that they don't know our kids. They don't know the black and brown kids. So they say they unruly, they don't this, they don't that. But each parent here, they've got a kid in the Hartford Public School system. We live next door to the rapists. We live next door to the gun person to tote the gun. So when our kids go to school, we don't have those outreach programs at school. Our neighbor just got killed. That kid go to school with attitude you don't even know why. You don't even question the fact, is there something wrong? Could we help you? Could we do something for you? This is not normal for you at your age. Instead, you sit around here and you criticize our kids. We walking down the street and they walk to school a whole mile. You talking about why they're late? Who would send their kid to school when it's three degrees outside and they got to walk a mile? Let's talk about being late. But back to our kids, these teachers not knowing our children. They not knowing their culture background and what we go through every day and our children. They not trying to understand our children. They get those big paychecks and they run back to the suburbs. How is that? They got a school board for the teachers, they're a union, they hide behind. At Parkville, there's some racism going on there. At Parkville, there's some racism going on there. I'm sure you guys heard about it. You in the system, so it done came past your desk. What we gonna do about things like that? You got a teacher rebelling against the principal because she want the best for our children. You got teachers that's telling me when I walk into school and I'm a part of the school, PTO and other things there, I'm not good with all these words like these teachers are. Didn't get a chance to get that kind of education when I was growing up. I'm 64 years old, it was deprived. Now here it is 2019 and our kids are getting deprived. And the next 5 to 8 years, community college is gonna be free in some form or fashion. My son will be out of high school in 10 years. He's not gonna be able to take that test to go to school. What we gonna do about it, people? Are we gonna listen to these teachers, cry and complain? Get some of our own color into these schools so they can teach these teachers? They can show these teachers and tell them what go in the community? They can look at a child, say, "Something wrong with that child." Not judge him because he's got an attitude. They can look at that child because they from that community and say, "There's something going on in their home. There's something wrong with this child's heart or his mind," instead of judging them. We need more of our own kind in our schools. And to teach these teachers that don't know. They've been in these classrooms for years and our kids are not learning. And they talking about they got problem. We got problems, they're not learning, our children. You got teachers that been in school, "I've been here 30 years, I've been here 40 years." What's your solution? What do you want? You want our kids to come to school and y'all carry guns into school? You want our kids to be walked out of school in handcuffs? What are you gonna do? Anybody got a solution?
Mr. Pierce, please address the board.
Has anybody got a solution? Does anybody? I'm tired of hearing them talk about our kids. Half these teachers shouldn't even be teaching, period. Period.
We need to maintain order, please.
Don't say that, don't say that. You look just like Uncle Tom anyway, so be quiet. Be quiet, be quiet.
We need to maintain order, please.
It's my turn, it's my turn. Shut up, Uncle Tom, it's my turn. It's my turn. There you go, see there? If he's a teacher, that's what our kids go through. That's just what our kids go through, just like that. He jumped in a conversation he shouldn't have been in. And if I'm a kid at the school, I got upset, I call him something, now I'm wrong. This is what go on in the school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce, thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Mike Snow, please.
We need to maintain order, please. Ms. Santana, please.
We are parents of the teacher, okay? We're the parents of the children that you talking about. We're not to be upset. We break our necks and there's a lot of single care. I was a parent at 14 years old. I had my first child when I was 14. I had a 7th grade education. Come on, man, don't let it stop. That's why we in ghetto, that's why the world is doing that. But we got veteran people against the color. Caucasian people need to go fuck that Caucasian hair. Come on, J.R. You come over here, teacher, I can let you talk about us as a child. Yes, but I'm just quite sure, my daddy stayed in this apartment, top of the air. I didn't watch any school, everything. That's right, this is not right.
Mike Snow. Malad Ros Vega.
I'm sorry, I'm a parent, I'm a grandma. Thank you for work for my grandchild and for my children. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. I must say, I'm coming here to speak Spanish and forgot about the Spanish speaking. Okay? Why? Because this is not right. Parents have right to speak when we're upset. Why the staff won't, the board for the creation, because his staff need to. Open his mouth when the parent speak. If you get upset, get upset! I want the security.
Ms. Vega, please address the board.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna address what happened here now. And the security take out, the parent was speaking and they want to start the problem, stay here like nothing. I must say, because if I neglect my grandchild, DCF took her away. And what happened, that all these teachers neglect our children in education. They even don't, doesn't know to read. And what gonna happen with them? Who gonna call DCF on them? I'm really upset. Yes. If they don't know the score, I can show the score of every school I got here. They, with all the respect for the teacher, we only have few that come to Hartford Public School to teach our children. But the other one here is just for the money, especially the one that comes from outside. I'm really upset, okay? Because they always say that children that don't read at the third grade level, they're not gonna read. That's a liar! I know a child, now it's a man, that have a mental retardation, a high level, okay? And he didn't read at the third level. But when he was in intermediate school, he found a student, a teacher, that teach him to read. You know what that mean? That the teacher come with a love, with her heart, to teach, not only for the money, our student wanting to learn. We need a real teachers. We need to evaluate this teacher that they say they've been for a lot of year and why our children is low. They compare about the student, the behavior, academic, but if the teacher don't have no motivation, how you think the student gonna have motivation? We need to start for them. Get a motivation, get motivate to teach the student. Don't stay in the same line, do something different. Thank you. God bless you, but we need to undo a differing. Start getting off from this teacher. Whoever don't want to teach, go out, get a new teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you.
Alexis Cologne.
Hello, my name is Alexis Cologne, I'm a parent. My daughter goes to Parkville. I grew up in Parkville, I grew up going to Core Middle, Hartford High. Like I've been all my school years in Hartford. And growing up, we did have a hard time with the reading levels and I like the fact that my daughter's principal is more active with the kids. We see the changes that she's been doing. Growing up, my reading level always been low. I always been on the, one of those students that had low reading scores and stuff. And I'm trying to make sure that my daughter don't go through what I did. I wanna make sure that the school is becoming, with her being the principal, we seeing improvements. My daughter is looking to read, is looking active to, wants to learn how to read. And we want to improve the students. And a lot of the teachers in Parkville is not agreeing with that. They're not looking like putting the effort to help with the new changes that the principal is trying to bring in for these students. And... So today's my first time speaking out, so I'm a bit nervous. But yeah, we want Parkville to able to accept the changes and if the teachers don't agree, then we think we need to change the teachers. We need to actually have teachers that want to really help our students. Because Parkville is a very multicultural school. We really want to help these students improve because there's a lot of students coming in being bilingual and they can't even sometimes have trouble even speaking. So we want that teachers really put more effort into wanting to help these students build their reading, learn to write, because at this point, I'm in college. And I could say throughout my years in schools in Hartford, I still have a hard time having to write a research paper for my college. And that all begins from the back, not having my parent. My father was also a security in the Hartford schools for about 11 years. And growing up and having him bilingual, I depend, okay, I'm gonna go to school, I'm gonna learn from being in school, but it was hard not having like that really support of teachers trying to help you build your writing, how to read and stuff like that. And till this day, I'm learning consequences and I'm having to teach my daughter, like, no, you're in school, your teacher's gonna help you, but I'm also gonna help you. But we need to also start with the teachers, making sure that they're helping our students also.
Yes!
Thank you. Millie Arseneaga.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Millie Arseneaga, I am the executive director of the Hartford Parent University. You know, what you see here tonight is change. But the change in mindset starts with oneself. And I know it's sometimes hard to do. But as I listen to teachers talk about our kids in a derogatory way and not look at their own code of conduct, which there is a Connecticut code of professional responsibility that I think that they're ignoring. And by statute, if they violate this, they can lose their license. And what you hear tonight is frustrated parents that have been stepping up to the plate and getting on leadership roles. But the nonsense that goes on because of a person's color of skin, really? Did you know where you were teaching at when you applied? Did you know that you were coming into a high poverty, Latino, African-American, immigrants? Population? So for you as teachers to sit there and judge our kids when you should be teaching them? That's why you're a teacher. Understanding them, like Jessie says. And maybe what we all need is a cultural competency training. Put that in the budget. Put that in the budget. But start with the teachers. Because if the teachers cannot understand our kids, then they don't need to work here. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shawn Robinson.
Hello, I'm Ms. Shawn Robinson. I'm a mother of 5, grew up in Hartford, went to Hartford Public Schools. Well, I wrote a speech for tonight, but I'm just really disgusted on how our kids were talked about. I'm just... The charter schools are doing it. Maybe they should use best practices at these neighborhood schools or magnet schools because the charter schools are doing it and it doesn't seem like they're having these kind of issues. But I'm concerned about effective teaching. When I look at the test scores from our district community schools, our schools are so far behind. Our kids are behind. If people with college degrees and teaching certificates are teaching our children, why aren't the kids learning? If you are the experts, they should be learning. There are schools with zero kids that are proficient in reading. And every time I review these charts, it gets worse. You all should be concerned. How will the kids become work-ready adults and leaders? To me, scores should be based on pay. If I'm looking at these charts with these reading scores and these kids, it's only 17 kids that can read in one school or none? Then we need to revisit why they're teaching. Why are they here? Why are they asking for extra pay? Another thing is, schools are not safe. When teachers are not reporting abuse and what's happening to children by their own colleagues and peers, we have a problem. You reporting us parents and that's why there isn't any parent engagement because the school is too busy acting like the police and reporting parents to DCF left and right. But I've witnessed things in school that happened with staff with other teachers standing around and nobody's reported but myself. That's the problem. So I do encourage everybody to stay woke because these are our kids. And I will be encouraging other families to look into what these teachers have said here tonight and I will be sharing it all over Facebook and Twitter. Because you will not come into my community and speak so poorly about our children. If you do not, if you have a problem and you're scared to be here, then you need to go where you live and teach and give our kids the seats that they're owed. Thank you.
Naisha McCauley.
Good evening, everyone. I came here tonight to, first, let me just clarify because I know many of you personally and professionally and many of you obviously are aware that I work for Chief Hartford. So I just wanted to be clear about who I was speaking for tonight. It is not a Chief Hartford, although what I'm speaking about is associated with a Chief Hartford. But just so we're clear, I'm not representing the organization. I personally am coming here tonight to talk about Weaver and the process that we were involved in around the new Weaver High School that really was led by Blue Hill Civic Association. So of course, the Chief Hartford was a part of this, but many others were as well. What I wanted to talk about was this process that we have formed around Weaver High School, which started about 2 years ago, where something unprecedented in Hartford, where we came together as a real community and wrapped our arms around a new vision for Weaver High School. Parents, teachers, business leaders, community leaders, everyone, students, everyone was at the table. We imagined and dreamed together of what a new Weaver could be. Addressing many of the things that you're talking about tonight, you know, we did it as a community for that reason, knowing and understanding our students, knowing and understanding the community, knowing and understanding one another. And it was the first time, I believe, anything like this has been done in Hartford, where you had the full support and full buy-in and everyone was dreaming and imagining together of what could be possible for the city. Unfortunately, I think that dream never really had a chance to manifest because, for various reasons. um, for various reasons, but it's, so it's kind of a lament of what has happened. Recommendations were put forward and there's this feeling as though these things are actually going to be implemented in, in the new Weaver and that just, I haven't seen the evidence of it. So I'm, I'm here tonight to talk to the board members and I'm just saying, you know, ask harder questions about what's happening at Weaver High School because there was something special that was started and it would be a shame to let all of the resources that was coming to Weaver to be squandered. And, and not just resources in name only, real resources. We were willing to come to the table with solutions, with funding, with everything. We fought through everything with those recommendations from beginning to end. It wasn't pie in the sky stuff of how are we gonna get this stuff implemented? It was real solutions backed with real dollars, commitment from real people who are willing to stay the course and see it through. So I'm just asking, ask hard questions about, and, and don't squander the opportunity and the spirit from all those people for two years who wrapped their arms around it and said, "We are here for this school." Thank you.
Raquel Calderon?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Dr. Torres. And really sad to see what's going on in here today. And this is, um, I am a substitute teacher and I go every single school. And lately, I choose where I have to go, where I feel safer. I heard, I heard the testimony of some teachers and they are one of the best teachers we have in, in Hartford. And I am glad they're here to share their comments and it's absolutely the truth. I am a witness. I go there and I don't use a card of color because I'm Hispanic or because my skin is dark. I'm not gonna use that card. But children talks to me. And the reason, and the reason that they don't pay to, you know, in school, they says they are forced to come to school, their parents send them to school because if they don't send them to school, they go to jail. They don't want to be in school. And then many of them, they sleep in class and they said that they couldn't sleep because there was too much noise in their house and this and that. I don't blame the, the children. No, I'm not against them. No, it's not their fault. There's a lot of problems out there. But these teachers are excellent teachers. And I'm not gonna put them down because I witness what they do, what they suffering. Students, there's a lot of violence. Yes, they call in DCF for everything because you, Dr. Torres, told us to do that after an hour. You told us that, you said that procedures in there that we have to call in this and that. Nobody should be blamed for that. If you see that a kid is, this is happening, I wish I had more time to talk because I have a lot of this to say. It's not safe in this school in Hartford anymore and the teachers are getting sick, tension, the kids are running less than, they're fighting, they're hitting other children and, and children, other ones are quitting because they says they don't want to be in a bullying environment, it's hostile environment right now. Not by every children, few. But those few keep us busy. And you need to do something about it because there's no consequences. Because they says, Dr. Torres says, oh no, we have to, we have to call her before we do something. So, the bottom line is no consequences right now. And these teachers are really excellent and I don't want them discriminated because they have blonde hair and they, and they have, we all different colors and it doesn't matter.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon, your time is up.
Michael Downs?
My name is Michael Downs, I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. AV Board Members and Superintendent. I'd like to address firstly, appointment of Craig Stallings to the Hartford Building Committee, School Building Committee. I think it's a very good appointment. He was an effective, very effective Board Chairman. And I also had a chance to work with him on several committees within AACP. And I've known him for over 30 years and he's a very nice person, very good and very, he'll be, make a very good member of that committee. As far as behavior goes, uh, one thing I remember that we used to have back 30, 35 years ago was a very effective and strong inside suspension. Now, the, uh, that's one way to address the behavior, it's not the only way, not the only reason that the students misbehave. But that, there shouldn't be, outside suspension should be rare. And, and it costs money. You have to have a certified teacher and a paraprofessional teacher, you have to male and female in the inside suspension room. And the high schools have to have two or three inside suspensions rooms. The middle schools have one. And they could even, they, they have them in, can have them in the elementary schools, but they have to be strong and they, and you have to support them and it costs money. The, another reason of course, students are out of the classroom and, and maybe misbehaving is because, uh, we're not having the courses, especially in the high schools that we need. And I'll address that at the, at our budget hearing. But the, the, it probably be as a citizen of Hartford, North Hartford, to see the, I see, I know the teachers have a good argument. And also the parents have a good argument. And somehow, we need teachers and we need parents and we need the students. So somehow, we would have to come to a meeting of the minds. Thank you.
Melissa Yenney?
All right, good evening, everyone. Um, so, I've been in Hartford my entire life. I'm a proud graduate of Hartford Public Schools. I went to this very school, MB Fox, I remember my second grade play, my teacher is actually in the back, Cork Middle School and Hartford Public High School. I'm also a proud daughter of an involved, single mom, Hiya Cynthia, who's holding my son, who literally came with me to school every single day. She didn't miss a day. Ask any of my teachers, she was there. I'm also a very, 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 very proud Hartford Public School teacher. And I am extremely, extremely involved in my community. I love my kids, I love this district and I do my job with every being, every string, every DNA piece of thing in my body and soul. I have a very unique perspective because I've seen this district from many different sides, not just the side of a teacher, not just the side of a student. I completely understand both sides that we have going on back here. But right now, we all need to find a way to come together. And when I say we all, I mean, parents, Board of Education members, students, teachers, administrators, we need to come together because we're in crisis. I'm currently concerned with the state of education in this district. We're failing our students, we're failing our parents, we're failing our teachers and we're failing our administrators. We are failing and it hurts. It hurts to say that. As a teacher, one of the things I pride myself in, in every school that I've worked in, is my ability to build relationships with my students. So today I come here with statements from my students. One student said, "As a student, I often find teachers stuck repeating the same thing over and over because several students believe it's appropriate to constantly interrupt the teacher. We find ourselves behind other classes, not understanding the curriculum and frustrated because teachers are not allowed to teach due to classes coerced by ill-mannered students and parents." This is from a student. Another one, "Students being obnoxious do disrupt my learning because I'm someone who likes to take detailed notes and when people won't stop talking, I can't hear the teacher to do that. I also ask, I also ask a lot of questions and sometimes the teacher can't hear me and when people decide to go off, the teacher can't teach to get the point across." So with that being said, our students, our parents, as we can hear, our teachers, as we can hear, are crying out for help. This is our future. For the sake of my son, who's literally sleeping right there, who will be a Hartford Public School student, we live here, we're not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere. I have a moral obligation to this district, I'm not leaving, even though it's difficult and the pay is not that great. We need to come together for a brighter future. It's looking real gloomy. It's looking real sad and I'm scared. Sorry, thank you.
Natalie Laniglis or Laniglis?
I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natali Laniglis. I've given myself a new title, Hartford Community Liaison. It's a real sad day for me because I echo the sentiments of both sides, of the parents and of the teachers. I think that increased calls to parent during the school day for normative age-appropriate student developmental matters is tantamount to parent harassment. You dare to teach our children? And as a parent, I believe my responsibility is to provide you with a student that is ready and willing to learn. A lot of times I say things that annoy my peers, but truly, us parents have to step up to the plate, we can't just put all the blame on the teachers. Okay? That being said, I think there's a need for employers in education to be informed and understand that you serve a highly needed community and you must be able to pinpoint differences, differences between a traumatic outburst of a child who has been exposed to socioeconomic disparities. As compared to a regular child who might be goofing off a little, a little bit, like my son, he was a little bit immature for his age. And then, you know, we have children who experience different levels of, of developmental issues. So, considering the whole garment of things, it looks like we need a community forum, okay? We have disgruntled parents, we have unhappy teachers, we have unsafe schools and we are all not happy, so we need to do something about that. I'm always for collaboration. I also wanna say that while there are good teachers, there's some rotten apples in the bunch, okay? I have been exposed to some real harsh treatment by teachers. Real, real harsh treatment. I'm one of the parents who, who went to a teacher and say, "Hi, I would like to engage you about my son." And I was told, "I'm a late parent in this district and I was told by a teacher, I'm gonna call DCF on you because I'm asking, how could we collaborate to make sure my son has a good year at school?" Okay? So it's about three weeks now I pulled him out of Hartford Public Schools and that hurts me. And I'm still here because I'm looking back for the other kids, okay? In one month, in one month, Justin is telling me about the core of the earth, the mantle and the crust, about land above water and oceanic land, about suburban rural and urban areas, about alliteration, about math, he has a geometry set in one month.
Ms. Laniglis, your time is up, thank you.
In one month, we could do this. Our children could learn. We have to come together, thank you guys.
And that concludes public comment. And we move on to the, uh, agenda. Ms. Santiago, call the role. Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Thank you. And we move on to the Superintendent's Report.
I know this is not a regular meeting and so my report is actually very short, but I will start, given that we have gotten into the practice of celebrating, trying to highlight our food and child nutrition services. I don't know if the team is here, but as you know, our food and nutrition services has taken major strides to provide healthy and often organic, locally grown and culturally relevant food offerings and meals served to approximately 21,000 students each day at no charge to our students. And the department is also focused on promoting healthy eating by engaging our students. In addition to continuing to increase the culturally relevant foods, our Director Lonnie Burr and her team are very committed to increasing local purchases and partnering with local businesses as often as possible. And they have a, an outstanding relationship with NOCS and often buy fresh purchases from them. They were recently acknowledged for their great work and received a, an award, a government agency award. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the team. They were also acknowledged in an official citation by our mayor in recognition of their major strides in providing healthy, locally grown and culturally relevant food offerings to all of our students. And so they were honored at the annual Community Food Services Award. So congratulations to our team. A few updates. One is relevant to the work that we continue to do in all of our schools with our DataWise Continuous Improvement Process and the second series of learning sessions that took place for district teams and 40 school teams. And this focus was to implement the last three steps of the process. And as you know, the teams have identified areas, priority questions and learner-centered processes and problems around improving literacy and our attendance. There was a call to action, an all-call to shoulder up for our summer bridge programming. On March 27th, we hosted a learning session with our community partners on summer programming. And we're grateful to the 55 partners that joined us at the all-call. And it was an opportunity for me to share with our partners data relevant to the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, including what we call early warning indicators, which were able to identify early on before students transition to, to high schools. And so we are now continuing those conversations and one of those next steps took place today where we, in collaboration with our mayor and his, Ms. Oliver. and his, Ms. Oliver and her department, welcomed the Hartford Opportunity Youth Collaborative as well. And this is all part of the work that we are beginning to do to make sure that our students have opportunities in the summer so that they can be ready for ninth grade and then to ensure that they remain on track in ninth grade so that they can be more successful in high school and when they enroll in post-secondary programming that they persist through those as well. Lastly, wanted to highlight with regard to transportation and our transportation department and their efforts to improve operational effectiveness to better serve our families. The transportation department has been reviewing a variety of demos of school bus parent portal apps, and the apps will provide real-time bus arrival estimates for our parents and students. They also notify them if a bus, for example, is going to be late. And this is all done through software and app. And so this is software that is a requirement of the RFP for the new bus contract that is going to be in place this summer. And the goal for this is to be available for our parents and our students next school year. And this is again in response to some of the feedback that we have gotten from our parents to improve communication and timely communication as to our transportation. That will conclude my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We have an administrative appointment. Motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Glynnis Jordan to the position of principal at Weaver High School.
Just going to look at my... And I will ask Chief of Schools Avila and Ms. Jordan to join us. And I'll just make a few comments. So Ms. Jordan is actually driven by her father's lack of educational access and opportunities. She is in her 24th year in education and currently serves as the Executive Director of Programs at New Leaders, Inc., which is a nationally recognized organization that, in which she designs and provides professional development to school leaders and their teams in transformational leadership. This is work that she does across the country. Throughout Ms. Jordan's journey, she has been an English teacher, a curriculum writer and developer, a program coordinator, a high school principal, and a cluster principal. As a New Leaders-trained professional transformational principal, she has led three high schools, all of which were in the stage of school turnaround. Some of her accomplishments include achieving double-digit gains on status achievement assessments within the first year of appointments, attracting and facilitating partnerships with organizations such as John Hopkins University, the Michelle Obama Foundation, as part of the theme-based programming that she was able to implement. She's also featured in the book, The Breakthrough Principles for Innovation in Operational Leadership, that led to dramatic improvements in student achievement. She's been featured on several national organizations around her work in leadership, has implemented a customized model of restorative practices, which has reduced serious disciplinary infractions and mediated adult-student conflicts. She's provided K-12 leadership and support to middle and elementary school principals within high school feeder patterns. And she has served as a lead facilitator with Unbound Ed, another nationally recognized organization, to lead learning for school leaders across the country. She has several other certifications as well. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Arts in English in Secondary Education, a Master's in Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment. She has lived in the greater Hartford area for just a little over a year. And so that is a brief snapshot of Ms. Jordan.
Do you have any comments, Ms. Oliver?
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. Dr. Torres Rodriguez. What I would say is that it is very clear that Ms. Jordan has a deep understanding of turnaround practices and has implemented them in a way that has impacted students and led to success. She truly understands the Hartford student. She understands what it takes to accelerate learning for all students. And at the heart of her soul is equity, and she lives and dreams and embeds that in everything that she does. I personally have had the opportunity to see that in action, and I do really believe that she is a good fit for Hartford and for Weaver High School.
Any comments or questions from board members? Ms. Proudie?
Good evening. Graduated from Weaver. And I just would like for you to maybe share why you think you're good for Weaver High School.
Well, my current understanding of Weaver, and admittedly, I have a lot to learn, is this strong sense of community. And so part of the fit is related to turnaround work, but more importantly, is really how I was raised. So a little bit about me, my grandmother had my mother late at 44. My mother had me at 44. So my maternal grandmother was born in 1886. So this idea around equity and community and grassroots and being true to your community and being true to those whom you serve has been instilled in me from childhood. And so I liken that to what I believe is part of the Weaver spirit, which is very much a spirit of pride, a spirit of community, a spirit of shared ownership for Weaver, for the school. And really, I see Weaver as being more of a community school than perhaps a school in the sense of it. And so that's one of the reasons why. But I think for me, it was really confirmed as I looked at the students' faces that served on the community panel and as I began to share with them some of the practices that I have done, that I saw lights come up in their eyes and I saw their posture change. And I have found that students are the best judges of character. And when I watched them, it kind of, you know, ignited a new fire in me to make sure that I do everything that is humanly possible to make sure that Weaver High School is the high-performing learning community that it once was and that we all believe that it can be.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Oliver? Oh. Ms. Claude? Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. Also a Weaver High School graduate here. And we're looking at Weaver High School as kind of a flagship hybrid school in terms of like magnet and community school together or neighborhood school together. Do you have any initial impressions or specific ideas about how you would help to meld this unique school community of magnet neighborhood with the component and a long history, longstanding history, as Weaver High School being kind of like a standalone comprehensive high school? Just wondering if you have any ideas on how to kind of look back at what the old Weaver was and move forward into this new flagship hybrid model for a high school?
So to answer your question, it's a little bit of yes and no. So yes, I do have a strategy. So my strategy is using a very robust tool. I'm going to diagnose the current state of the school across the four priority areas that is in our current model that we have with the whole student model. Secondly, I really want to dive deeper into the recommendations that have been made by the committee to learn more about what the committee is asking for, at the same time learning more of the historical context of Weaver, while at the same time being really focused on first hires around the school leadership team. And so from the learnings of that, which includes a lot of listening, a lot of observations, a lot of engagement with multiple stakeholders, from that information, then come up with the plan. It's very easy for me to say, oh, we could possibly do X, Y, and Z, right? But will that really work for Weaver? And so I don't know that yet. What I do know, though, is how to find out what will work for Weaver, and I can't do that by myself. I need to engage all of the stakeholders in that process. And then, once we have all the information that we need, then convert that into a 30, 16, 90, 120-day plan that then becomes public. So not only do I intend to publish the plan, but also engage in updates on how we're doing, the goals that we've met, what we haven't met and why, what we plan to do about it, and also engage the stakeholders in any ideas so that we can meet our goals.
Very strategic and thoughtful. Thank you so much for your response.
You're quite welcome.
Ms. Claude?
Thank you. So looking over your resume and just hearing the magnitude of what's going on within our community, Hartford is very, very unique where we're very passionate about our schools, our district, education, our children. And so with your background with respect to reducing serious disciplinary infractions, I would love to hear your approach with respect to restorative action, suspensions and outside suspensions or wherever, on how you use the, excuse me, how you reduce disciplinary infractions.
Yes, so honestly, I got involved in restorative practices not necessarily to be a national trainer or presenter on it. I got involved with it because I simply got tired of suspending black and brown children and sending them to jail as a high school principal. That's why. And I said, there has to be a better way. And so through restorative practices, we were able to develop a model that, in one school, it was called the Student Accountability Center, and another school, it was called like the AIM Center, but the concept is the same. And what it is, is a restorative approach to how we manage student behavior, and that's the term that I use. And in each case, there was a center where I just simply strategically reallocated the staff that I had, so that I had one administrator dedicated to that with a team of support individuals, so that when we were restored, that we were 80% proactive and 20% reactive. And so that really involved engaging the staff and a lot of professional development around, first of all, how we talk to children and using restorative language. So instead of saying, you know, "Don't do this," let's just rephrase it into, "This is what we do." So instead of saying, "Don't make assumptions," seek to clarify. So we would change the language. And then through a whole model where we would provide students with different tools and strategies, because what I've found is that oftentimes when students come from impoverished conditions or just any type of condition where they didn't have access to certain communication tools or the proper tools to engage, there was simply a task around, how do we work with our students in a dialogue, in an exchange, so that they can learn a better way to communicate and a better way to engage? And so we had certain things in place that were alternatives to suspension. One of my schools was in its own township. We had partnerships with the fire department, partnerships with the mayor's office, partnerships with Walmart. And so it was very easy for us to call the parents and say, okay, here's the choice. You know, he can go home for two days with you, or he can spend two days with the firemen and wash fire trucks and kind of learn about life. And the parent, "Oh, we let him do that." So it was those types of things, right? Community service. So you have injured our community, so now how do you repair that harm? We had different types of, call them like work details, where they could plant things or they could do a little bit of cafeteria. So there were different types of things in place for students, but most importantly, it was all about changing the mindset. So we had a motto at one school, excellence from all for all. It was changing the mindset. Once, it really, the interesting thing is this, it wasn't hard to change the kids' minds. Their minds were really, they want to be successful. No student gets up in the morning and say, "Oh, I want to disrupt. Oh, I want to do this." They wanted to be successful. Once they actually started believing that somebody believed in them, it became very easy. The bigger challenge was actually the adults. The students, it just went like wildfire. And so we changed the way the school looked. We just, it was a whole different rebranding, for lack of a better term. And we had a discipline policy because, you know, I do believe in shared accountability. And so there were non-negotiables. And as long as you didn't violate one of those non-negotiables, we were good. And it was clear. It was clear to staff, it was clear to students. Staff understood what the discipline policy was. Everything ran on a system. And so when I inherited one school, the discipline infractions were 70, I think 72% of the students were suspended at 15, at the time it was 1511 when I got the school, 1511. And by the end of that year, we had reduced suspensions all the way down to 7%. And at the same time, we jumped up to 1860. So it was really about mindset, really about approach and adjusting the model so that we were not punitive, but we were restorative. And even when we had to suspend students because we had to suspend, they knew it. When the conversation came, they already knew it. It's, I know I'm going home. I know this is why. I know you got to do what you got to do. And I did. And I love you, but you know, I can't, you know, we can't do this here. And they understood, you know? And in some cases, they could negotiate and restore and get some time back. But that's basically what we did. So for Weaver, what I would do is conceptually, we would have something similar. I just don't know what it would actually look like because I'm still learning about the school.
Thank you for that response. I just have one more quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
And with your wealth of experience and just looking over your resume and some of the leadership roles that you have been doing and the wonderful opportunities that you've been afforded nationally, just curious, why principal? Why come, not using the word "come down," but you have such a wealth of experience in consulting and doing other work. Why come to be a principal?
So the main reason is I miss the kids. And that's the driving reason why Hartford is. When I looked at the vision around the whole student, that was something that attracted me. I've been blessed in my work that every year, pretty much, since I exited the principalship to go to what I do now, every year in every district that I work with across the country, almost every district has offered me a job. And that's a blessing. I don't take that lightly. However, when I looked at Hartford, something was a little bit different because now we're talking about equity. And now we're talking about closing the achievement gap between the haves and the have-nots. And now we have a superintendent that has a vision that is focused on making sure that every student graduates prepared to transform the world. And you're the board, so you have to be supporting that, too. And so what attracted me to Hartford was really that vision. I believe in transformation. I believe in what the power in believing in students can translate into and can do for students. And when I saw what is happening at Hartford, though it's still underway, right? I've sat in here all night, so I know we still have work to do, but it's underway. And I thought, what an opportunity if I could be a part of this work. And so that's what specifically attracted me to Hartford that didn't, other places just didn't have that. I want to be somewhere where I can make an impact. I want to be in a school setting where the children can leave every day saying, "I was better because I came here today." Or when they graduate from school, they, you know, as the kids, say, "Hit me up on Facebook" or "Hit me up on Instagram," and they're going over stories of what happened in school. Those are the types of things that I want to do. I want to do my part to make sure that every student really leaves. I want the vision to be real. So when people come to Weaver, I want them to look at the superintendent's vision and mission and say, "Here, they're not lying about it. This is really what is happening." And because I believe in that vision and I believe in the work of this and I believe in the work of this board, that's what made me say, okay, this is where I believe I can serve and I can help be a part of something great and something transformative.
Thank you so much.
I thank you for your in-depth comments. And I don't really want to put you on the spot, but you said one thing that raised questions to me. You said that the challenge were the adults. And you said through our public comments and saw a very lively exchange of thoughts and indeed, at times, behavior that was less than civil. And I wonder how you see this challenge here as to mending the relationships and the partnership between the staff and the parents?
Yeah. The bigger the challenge, the bigger the opportunity. And that's really how I look at it. It was a challenge. It was a welcome challenge. And it was a challenge that made me a better principal as well as made a lot of teachers better teachers. And so, once we get the staff identified and there's some things that, you know, I kind of have in mind, again, I can't be sure of anything until I get all of the information that I need. But that's something that is a realistic challenge that would present itself. And but what I found is that just through some very strategic moves that we can really work together to transform minds. And in the transformation of minds, by default comes the transformation of practice. And when we get a transformation of practice, we get a transformation of outcomes for students. And that's really what I'm about. So when I say like a learner-centered environment or a learning community, I'm talking about adults and students. Myself too, we're all learning. We're all getting better. We're all growing. And so through an approach that is a balance of pressure and support, I believe very strongly in supporting staff. I do a lot of work with professional learning with staff. I believe in building the capacity of staff. I also believe that students deserve the absolute best. And I believe that that's what every parent sends us every day is their best and that we have to give it our best. And I'm in it to help teachers to do that. And, you know, if that can't happen, then there are other conversations that we can have. So I see it as a challenge, but it's a welcome challenge. Because sometimes, sometimes it's just about providing a different perspective. I've worked with teachers who said some of the same comments that I've heard here tonight. And then to watch their perspective change from the inside out? I mean, there's no paycheck big enough for that. I mean, when that moment happens, then you know that you have just changed a child's life. So challenge, yeah. But I've never turned down from challenges and I don't expect to do that now, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Oliver?
So I had the privilege of having a nice conversation with you in depth. So I really didn't have a question, which is one of the reasons I want to allow my colleagues to go before me. As I shared, I too was a Weaver alum. Weaver was home. And for many of us, we feel like we lost our home. And so we're looking to you to rebuild it. I look forward to working with you and partnering with you. And thank you for embracing community because it's about time we take this journey together. So thank you very much. And I will be voting to approve this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all. Thank you all for your questions. Thank you for your concerns. Thank you for really being advocates for the community. And so we are going to work together. I don't have all of the answers, but I know this, that all of the answers are generally in the room. And together, we can work it out. And together, we will work it out for our community and our students.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Jordan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Then it is approved. The ayes have it. If there's anything more you'd like to say, you have the opportunity to do that. You don't have to.
Well, I'm a little emotional now. Yeah, I just, um... Yeah, I just, I really believe in children. And I've just always felt like I've just been called to, especially black and brown children, and making sure that they have the same options and the same access points as their white peers. And so I am so honored to lead. What I understand about Weaver is such an honor. So I can...
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Congratulations.
Let's go.
Next, item four point two. We have the second reading and adoption of policy number five one twenty-four, confidentiality and access to education records. And the recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education accept the second reading, adopt policy fifty-one twenty-four, confidentiality and access to education records. Any comments from members of the policy committee? Ms. Hill?
Yes, so this policy is really coming forward as a second read and adoption. Think of this as more of us trying to get in line with our accountability around our policies, making sure that we're in compliance with state statute. Cleaned up a number of really like formatting and numbering within the policy, some specific language around who a school official is, like specifically outlining that. An update to include modern methods of recording school records such as electronic messaging, messaging videos, audio, and also mobile applications. So just keeping our policy in line with the times. And also, as I said, just satisfying the statutory compliance and referencing things from internet to a website where our policies now live for the posting. So this is really trying to help policy committees stay in line with compliance and accountability and adhere to statutory regulations. So we'd be most gracious on policy committee if folks would approve this for a second read and adoption.
Questions? So do I hear a motion to approve the policy number five one two four?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, should I do that second?
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. It has been approved. Next, we have a resolution appointment of school building committee member. And to admit, this is actually a correction. We were working on committee appointments pretty much till the last minute for the last board meeting. And there was an error in the way the resolution was worded the last time. So this is to correct that. Mr. Craig Stallings will continue to serve on the school building committee. And Ms. Oliver will step down. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, one abstention. The ayes have it. Motion passes. The resolution passes. Item four point four, contract amendment approval, Hartford Graduate School of Education, that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to amend the contract with Harvard Graduate School of Education for an additional fifty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for ten additional DataWise coach certifications for an extended term ending June thirtieth, 2020. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Flores. This is part of the work that we presented when you first approved the first contract. We had not gotten the cost of it at that point. This is, just want to make a correction. This is not for ten additional. These, this is for just ten, the first ten coach certifications that will allow ten of our staff members to become certified coaches so that we can then turnkey the training and be certified to support school teams throughout the district. The work, as you know, aligns with district priority of teaching and learning and our goals of increasing literacy, graduation, and improving our attendance. This is work that will require for these, the group of ten to engage in learning throughout the entire year, taught directly by the folks and the experts at Harvard. There will be support that is in the form of web-based learning and on-demand coaching. And our ten, the ten coaches would also be required to demonstrate proficiency in all of the competencies of the DataWise coaching certification process. One thing that I would like to add, given that this is an investment that we are going to be making, we are going to be requiring a stip, we're going to have a stipulation, if you will, so that the ten that we identify have to remain in our district for a certain amount of time thereafter. And if they do, any one of them decides to leave us, they will be required to pay the district for the investment that was initially made. And so we will be working that out with our talent management office.
Any questions from the board members? Yes, Ms. Clark?
Just one quick question. Is the data that they're collecting, and I cannot remember, I do believe we talked about it. Is it ours or is it going to be with Harvard?
It is our data. What we are doing with Harvard as part of the entire, not just this, you know, not just this for the coaches, but the entire learning experience is that Harvard is going to be doing research with us in terms of the implementation of this continuous improvement process systemically, as you all know. This is something that we're doing with all of our schools and also at the district level. And so that's a different kind of data that they're going to collect in terms of implementation data. But in terms of the improvement and the outcomes that we're going to monitor as our teachers, our school teams, and our central office teams learn, it is data, our data around literacy and attendance and graduation. But we will own that data.
Okay, thank you. And then, sorry, I said one quick one, but actually one other one. The sustainability of this after with like the updates or anything like that, are they kind of guaranteeing that they will provide some sort of, like, if any updates or anything happens, that we'll be able to have that versus contracting them out again?
So this is why we want to do this work. When we first presented the first contract, that was year one. We still have another contract that we are going to be negotiating with Harvard for year two for the current teams, all the forty, you know, forty school teams and the central office team. That's year two of that work. But this will allow us to not have that reliance on Harvard past year two. So we will have ten experts that are certified in our district to do the work and to train others.
Thank you.
And I have a question for clarification. You said that we would require them to pay back the cost if they leave within a certain amount of time. And I assume the reason for this is that this is an additional certification that will make them more marketable?
Absolutely. And this is a very differentiated way of achieving the certification normally. So I am a certified coach. I happen to be the only one in this state that is a certified person in this model. And it is quite, you know, an incentive, if you will. And it is looked upon as an added bonus when you have someone that is trained not only in the model, which is what currently is happening, but to teach others in the model.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'd like to restate the recommended action based on the superintendent's correction. The recommended action is that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to amend the contract with Harvard Graduate School of Education for ten DataWise coach certifications for an extended term ending June thirtieth, 2020. So we're striking out the words additional. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes. And now we move to the public comment on the budget. Item five point one.
Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Robbie?
In regards to the vote that was taken for the appointment of the school building committee, I think, I don't think it passed. Karen, I don't know. Is it appropriate for me or you? So on that vote, you had three yes, two abstain. So that's three that doesn't pass because it was not four out of seven. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is our attorney here?
Well, did you? Did you have the votes on the computer?
Oh, because Karen wasn't here.
Oh, you had stepped out of the room.
I am abstaining from the vote. No, you were. I wasn't here, but I will abstain. Okay, so, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so we are researching that. We'll move on to the public comment on the budget. Before we get started, I'd like to go over the ground rules for the meeting. This is a public hearing on the superintendent's recommended budget. All public comments should be related to the budget. Any other public comments should be kept until the end of the regular board meeting, until the next regular board meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At the two minutes mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute to wrap up. At the sound of the second bell, your three minutes are up. We have a lot of speakers tonight. Please be respectful of others' time. If you run out of time, you may submit your comments in writing to Ms. Santiago. No boisterous conduct shall be permitted. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. No signs allowed inside the board meeting room. Speakers may not yield their time to another speaker. A speaker must refrain from naming employees. A speaker may address the board no more than twice during a single meeting. This is a difficult budget season and we encourage you, but please be respectful. And now I will read it in Spanish. Antes de comenzar, queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública del presupuesto recomendado por la superintendente. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben estar relacionados a este presupuesto. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la junta. Cada miembro del público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión, significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche, así que por favor seamos respetuosos del tiempo de los demás. Si no le da el tiempo, puede entregar sus comentarios por escrito. No se permite conducta ruidosa. El tiempo límite será aplicado estrictamente. No se permiten ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite el lenguaje vulgar o soex. No se permiten letreros dentro del salón de la reunión de la junta. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se deben mencionar empleados por nombre. Una persona no puede dirigirse a la junta en más de dos ocasiones durante una misma reunión. Este es un periodo de presupuesto difícil y queremos escuchar sus observaciones, pero por favor mantengamos el respeto. Gracias. Ms. Clark?
Haisha Nenyi. Tiffany Moyer-Washington.
I just had a quick clarifying question. So, I looked through the budget and... Push the button, okay. So, I looked through the budgets, and, you know, I'm a teacher, I'm an English teacher, and my wife does my budget at home, so I don't know much about that. My question was, though, on one page, it said net position changes, and it said there'd be 11 behavioral specialists for the district. And then, when I looked through the following 24 pages, there's no behavioral specialists indicated for any of the schools. So, I guess my question is, according to that budget, will the board superintendent allocate those behavioral specialists as needed throughout the, like, the schools didn't budget for them individually, but those positions are listed on that net change? So, are those board positions that will be reallocated to the schools? So, I guess that's a clarifying question. And the other question, I know it's not, it's sort of budget-adjacent, can we get Ms. Jordan to run professional development for the staff about restorative approach, because it seems like we have an expert in the district? So, that's just my question about the behavioral specialists and who would allocate them according to the budget.
Yes.
So, I know we're not supposed to engage in the answer. However, our staff is here, and we'll definitely have an answer for you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Downs?
Good evening, board members. Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I've been tied up the past couple of weeks with some family matters, but I, I read in this morning's paper, the mayor's proposed budget, and I think it only had about 284 million or something that, for education. And I thought we had, our budget last year was close to 300 million. I could be mistaken, but it be that as it may. Once we decide on a budget, we should all stick together when we get on to the city council to their hearing on it. But I, I, I'll tell you that what is going to be coming up in the next mayoral election concerning the budget and getting state money restored that was taken away, because when I asked about where's the money and where'd the money go when all these cuts were made in vocational technical education, family consumer science, culinary, the guidance counselors, physical education, art, music, librarians, special ed, social worker psychologists, preschool, I mean, we should, we still need all-day preschool free for all of our preschool students in the city of Hartford. Instead of making the classes larger, we should make them smaller and stop stuffing them in the, in the one school and stuff them in the classrooms. We're listening to members of the state legislature who want to deny us money by closing our schools and, and taking away our programs. And these programs, this will be, this will be coming up, but I, I'm looking for a, an avenue to the state legislature to report these, these items that are missing in the city of Hartford. And these are budgetary matters, and they're going to cost money, obviously. Vocational technical education costs money, but it's money spent in every other district in the state of Connecticut except Hartford. So, I, I think, again, I disclose by saying, once we, you know, we should together try and push for some of these things. It's a shame that we have some beautiful libraries with no librarian, and they're not used by the students. So, I, I, I would close by, by saying that we have to stop cheating Hartford students, and we're cheating the, actually, the people of Hartford by not offering these programs. And that's one of the reasons high school students especially are not going to class, and students are misbehaving. It's not the only reason, but that's one of the reasons. And we have to make school interesting for all students, not just students that are going to college. English and math are very, very important for all students, but we need these other programs, too. And, but we need to go to the council together, once we get this together, and, and fight for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downs.
Amilda Barges?
Well, that concludes the public comment on the budget. Several of our signed-up speakers left before it was their turn to speak.
Waiting for Christina.
Ms. Santiago?
So, yes, because there is five members, and it is the majority of the members present, so we can get it.
So, the motion passes, and thank you.
Can you repeat that?
So, the five people, there is a majority of the board members that are present. Okay. You know, so, something like abstention, that's, but it is still the majority of the board members present. As long as we have...
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.